Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for July 27th, 2010. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ann Mayer. Carol Chelman. Kent LaPage.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Schulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Lisa Sweet.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
And we'll welcome our new Student Council Representative Savannah Fedora.
Hi.
Welcome.
So if I could ask you to join me for a moment of silent reflection?
Yes. Fellow Board members, it's been a kind of a sad month. In the last month, we've lost both Charlie Vaughn, which I mentioned earlier, and that I do want to revisit ROTC in his memory and see what we might do. But unfortunately, this past week, we lost another individual that gave of his time to the whole community of Portsmouth, but he was relentless on what he did for the Portsmouth School Department, both on the field and at proms and just about anywhere Pat could take a picture. Pat McCartney, who was a member of the rec board for the last 20 years, passed away last Sunday, a week ago Sunday, and oddly enough, I had just talked to him that prior week down at the nursing home. And I'd like us to remember Pat. I know that Ed and I, the superintendent and I, had just been talking about doing something in Pat's memory because literally Pat had taken well over 25,000 pictures of students through the Portsmouth School System for over 20 years at little to no cost to the Portsmouth School System. So somewhere along the line in the fall, I'd like to see us do something to remember Pat, probably during one of the sports events because that's where he was most well-known. Thank you.
Thank you. Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to accept the minutes that we couldn't do last week, last time because we didn't have--
So moved.
Second. So having read them over, any discussion, any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Anybody sign up for "I doubt it"? Okay, we'll skip the public commentary part, we'll move straight to the special presentations. We have Attorney Sullivan here today. Thank you for joining us again.
Certainly my pleasure.
For real?
Thanks to be on the other side of--
In these difficult economic times, any job is a good one. Since the last meeting of the Board, I have been, I've taken some time and I've redrafted to some small degree the Declaration of Trust, which might be used by the school board and by the Portsmouth High School Student Council to create an endowment fund. I have made three, two specific changes at the request of the Board and then an additional change, which I'll explain. The Board asked first that I add some provisions in here to provide a little more substance to a person reading the trust so that they might understand why it's being written and what its purpose is. To that end, I have written the three whereas clauses, which you'll see on page one. It has to be kept in mind that the Student Council in proposing this trust deliberately had very broad goals and in which they hope to accomplish with the trust, and they wanted a lot of flexibility as to how the funds might be expended in ways which directly or indirectly benefit education. So even with these whereas clauses in there, there's some room, I think, to debate what might actually happen with the trust. And frankly, that's intentional. It is what the Student Council wanted, and I hope that the language I put in there has balanced that desire of the Student Council with the need of the school board to have a little meat on the bones. Secondly, the school board wants to make sure that the Student Council, when it performed its role under this trust, operated in accordance with Constitution and bylaws. So I've added item five to the trust, which requires that. It attaches to the trust the existing Constitution and bylaws, more by way of illustration for people who read this trust in the future so they'll understand what is meant by the provision rather than by strict limitation. In fact, the Student Council under the trust is not limited to the Constitution and bylaws which it has today. It can amend those in the future, as long as there are always structural documents to control the way that the Student Council works. Now, the third item, which I put in on my own thought, first off, has a major typographical error in it, which I will confess, the final draft of this document was produced about 15 minutes after the close of the agenda that you have in front of you now, and it was only by the grace of the superintendent that I even had that 15 minutes. Because of that problem, I didn't proofread it as adequately as it should have been proofread, and therefore, there's a mistake in item 11, the new item. And the mistake is that in the second line, the word terminate should be determine. With that correction made, this final provision should read as follows. "The Portsmouth School Department, acting through its school board, shall have the authority to determine that it is no longer in the best interests of the Portsmouth School Department to maintain this trust. The school board may terminate the trust by providing 30 days' written notice to the other parties to this agreement or their successors. Any vote of the school board to terminate this trust must pass by a two-thirds majority of those members present in voting. In the event of such termination, all proceeds then contained in the corpus of the trust shall be distributed for a purpose otherwise authorized by the trust, as determined by the school board." And my thinking in adding this new provision was that maybe some of the concerns that the Board expressed at the last meeting had to be kept in mind going forward into the future. Right now, we are fortunate to have a Student Council with a lot of interest in maintaining this trust, creating it and maintaining it. We have Mr. Ducharme, who is quite dedicated to the concept and is certainly going to work hard to put money into the trust and see that the trust operates as it should. But let's say 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, those situations don't exist, or for reasons that we cannot even foresee as we sit here tonight, something is going wrong, then I thought it would be a good idea to put what I like to think of as sort of a fail-safe mechanism into this trust. And the fail-safe mechanism is that you or your successors in the future, if there's ever a problem, you can seize control of the situation and terminate the trust and distribute the funds in some way that you deem appropriate for educational purposes. I hope that the Board finds that with the provision of this 11, all concerns or all possible concerns that anyone might have have been addressed and that the trust is now suitable to be authorized.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Dexter?
Since I was the one who expressed concern with the original document, I'd just like to congratulate the city attorney for incorporating those concerns in the revision and still balancing what the Student Council wants to accomplish. And particularly, for me, it's satisfying, as you describe, a fail-safe option so that our successors in the future, if anything goes wrong, have the authority to try and write it. So from my perspective, it meets all the concerns that I originally raised, so terrific job.
Great. Thank you. Kent?
And I know that as Dex and I sat here together, we're kind of, I don't know, over a month ago, going back and forth a little bit, and that there were great concerns that I had, that, again, I think everything's there. And what did make me feel a little bit more at ease was not only the work that you had done, Bob, but, and I'm taking it, and I just clarify, the Student Council membership that you have also passed along, it's Constitution, I guess, is what you labeled it. And the one question I have in there is, I went through there over the weekend, is there a place that says that this is a subcommittee to that, that the trustees of that? I mean, that was one thing I kept going through, and maybe I wasn't quite catching that on there, because I do know, as you read Portsmouth High School Student Council Constitution, that I didn't catch that. That was the only thing that kind of stuck out. Do you know if there, because it won't be the whole Student Council that would be a membership of this trust, trustees through the Student Council Fund. It's a subgroup of that with other forces also on it. Is that a correct assumption?
Correct. The Constitution was written before this trust, and Constitution was not in any way amended in connection with the trust, so the Constitution does not in any way specifically refer to this trust.
Okay. Because I have a, and so, again, in regards to the trust, I think I'm all set. I think we've, you've done the proper job that was asked to protect the city with something that hopefully will grow to what Attorney Bob has gotten into and his Student Council want to see this grow and really have a higher foundation of funding. But where I do have, and I go back towards the superintendent, and I know that Jeff Collins, the principal's not here, is that under the Portsmouth High School Student Council Constitution, one of the things since this has come up is I've got a number of inquiries from parents only, no students, that it's been tough for some students to apply or be part of the Student Council. And I would never want to see a Student Council that's kind of a clique amongst itself. So I would like a follow-up, and again, that's nothing to do with the trust, it's more to do with the Student Council, because now we have the subgroup that will be a part of that, that will be out there doing it. And I want to make sure that every student is given the opportunity to be a member of the Student Council, which, from what I've had, a number of people approach me on, may not always be as inviting. I'm not saying they were discouraged, I'm not saying that they were turned away. I think when they go for their membership on a yearly basis, that a letter or something goes out so that both parents and students know they have the opportunity to apply for. Thank you. And thank you, Bob, for the follow-up that we asked.
Anything else?
I just have a tongue-in-cheek question. Because you mentioned on the, number three on your first page, that you, it was the combination of the word determine and terminate, which is actually, the Board should determinate?
The word--
And I was curious if that's similar to refugiate?
I'm trying to give as much authority as possible to the Board, even if it means inventing new words. The school board should have the authority to determine--
Right.
--that it is no longer in the best interest--
On your opening memo.
And I have to confess, I--
Determinate. On your memo, I don't--
You're right.
Number three--
Put the city attorney under some undue duress here.
It's not even a comment on that at all.
Right.
It's an opportunity to make a joke.
The Board should determine.
Sorry, Bob.
So, Mr. Chair, can, I mean, is it appropriate that we accept a motion and vote on this?
We can do it now. We have it under our business, but we can do it now.
It's up to you.
No. Make the motion--
So can I make a motion that the Board approve the Portsmouth, the trust of the Portsmouth High School Student Council Endowment Fund with the revision that the city attorney has noted?
Second.
Any further discussions?
So is this a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What will happen next, for your information, is that we'll have the document executed by the Student Council and then executed by the trustees, at which time, I believe there's already some money already being held in the School Department, ready to be deposited into the trust, so it should be in existence and operating in a week.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. So next up, Pat Laska.
Hi, Pat, how are you?
Thank you for the opportunity for me to briefly present what has gone on in my program this year. I think you all received a green copy just a little while ago, so you're not going to have time to read it, but I'll just go over the highlights. The program, it's about a three-quarter of a million-dollar program for our budget. Our budget, we didn't come present to you earlier in the year because essentially, as an enterprise account, we raise the money we spend. And the good news, after the auditor was here July 9th, is that we are plus this year roughly $12,000 compared to the $1,700 last year. So that makes me very happy. Part of the reason is the extra lunches that we sold this year. Part of it is the fact that many students have gone from reduced to free, and we get more funding from the state with that option. And then with the delayed starts, all those students who normally went home to eat lunch now eat lunch with us. And that's about 12,000 more lunches this year because of those two reasons, and that equals money. And for the record, for the audit, last year, our reimbursements in donated federal commodities were $289,000. This year, it was $343,900. So you can see the big difference that it made. My hope for next year is that we have more students buying lunch, because participation, if you have the same labor, but you have more people buying your meals, it's going to help put you over the edge. And when I read in my professional journals about districts that have 80% of the students eating their meals, they have a lot of money. Many of those districts are high in the free and reduced population, inner cities, et cetera. Portsmouth is in one of the tougher spots. We aren't as low in free and reduced participation as some surrounding towns, but at 23%, it's difficult to roll in the dough from the federal government, so we have to have customers who want to buy our meals. And luckily, this year, we had the Wellness Committee finally meet, and we had subgroups, and I do have a school board member and others who are working with me on coming up with plans that we can use to move forward and get a better image of school meals. The Jamie Oliver news that was out there, I still see emails and blogs and professional information about that. And I was writing my new letter to go on the school nutrition webpage, and in it, I was discussing the fact that we haven't had fry laters in Portsmouth for more than 10 years. So when you read down south, big news, they're taking the fry laters out, you know, we haven't done that for a very long time. We try to do lots of fresh fruits and vegetables. We do receive a lot of canned product through the commodity foods program, and so I'm trying to work with the staff about putting canned and fresh side by side. Some schools' canned fruit flies out of there, just because I think it's what they're used to at home, so that's what they prefer to the fresh. The Little Harbor parents, for the past two years, have worked with me on the try-it days, where we offered healthy, novel options. You know, we tried things like raw turnip and pomegranate seeds, and you might have seen the newspaper that we had the shrimp, because some of the parents wrote a grant, and we were able to purchase with cooperation from the fishermen, some shrimp that was already devaned and ready to go. And so that saved a lot of labor, and we let everybody in the cafeteria try it, whether they purchased a meal or not. And some students wanted more than two, but some students didn't want to try it at all. And that's just the nature of food, I think. So the other big news this year that really made me happy is that we went ahead and purchased the point-of-sale system so that now all five schools have the computerized system, which is wonderful. My staff thought I was crazy to introduce that in May, but I said, you know, in September, you're going to be happy that you know what you're doing with this. We've already graduated all the students up to the next grade, their money goes with them, it's all good. Now, what I'm hoping to work on are two things that, one is not down here, which is, Steve and I have talked for a long time about the pie in the sky idea of letting parents use credit cards or PayPal to make payments for their lunches. We have to cooperate with the city on that, and so that will be a discussion. But many, many parents request that. We have a cashless society these days, and we are really behind the times in not allowing that. You go on websites, and everybody has credit card payments or bank deposits. So we will work on that. And I think the other good thing that, well, to me, it's good news, is we've talked about it and thought that we ought to keep lunch and breakfast prices the same this year, which will make those people who can't even pay the 40 cents for a meal very happy. And how I hope to accommodate the fact that labor is going to go up because of their contractual increases is, if we can get more students buying our meals, and hopefully by working with the Wellness Committee and student input, we can have an even more successful year than we have this year. So are there any questions?
Tom?
I'm interested in just understanding the capabilities of the point-of-sale system, and more specifically, in the area of, are you able to load and track the actual types of meals that you're serving? So that if you're serving a nectarine, or you're serving a hot dog or a chicken nugget, are you able to track those in that system so that as you go through this, you know, try-it days in the cafeteria, you can actually have a sort of a catalog of, you know, what's selling, what's not? You know, what have I tried, what have I not tried? So that, you know, maybe that's something through this, you know, wellness program, that stuff can be reported out, so that as you try to fine-tune and hone, you know, your deliverable to these kids, that could actually be an interesting tool to, one, report out and as well as provide guidance in terms of how you design a menu.
We already have been doing that for years, because for federal claiming of meals, we have to record how many lunches we served. And generally, at the elementary level, we have four choices. We have the sandwich, the yogurt, the one and two main dishes. Number one, generally, in our menu planning, is the most popular. However, we sometimes will put turkey as a one, even though we know that the students are not as excited about that as their parents are, or as the faculty who comes to eat with us on those days. So if I were to have buttons where I would have them choose, you know, one or two, that would be more detailed. But already, we have participation daily for the meals, and the managers in each kitchen pretty much project already how many of this and that they need to prepare, and so they're pretty close. Now, every now and then, like at the elementary school, because with the point-of-sale, we don't do the choosing of the one and two any longer, so they have to calculate what they think they're going to serve. So invariably, the last student in the last lunch wants A, and all that's left is B, C, and D. And so hopefully, we can make them happy and say, you know, tomorrow or the next time, we'll be sure that we save a special piece for you or however. But, you know, we don't like children to break down into tears, but sometimes that does happen. And hopefully, my staff is so trained about food waste, that they are very hesitant to over-prepare a popular item. But I've been working with them about the fact that it's better to make all your customers happy and to have a little bit left over, that maybe you can serve another day if it's been handled properly. So that pretty much, we know what our numbers are, and we know what is more popular. As far as tracking of, say, a nectarine, that's a little more difficult, because it's out in the salad bar area or the self-serve area. And the parents who have been watching what the elementary students do, invariably, the main dish and the beverage, it's easy, but when they're all supposed to walk past the salad bar and take something, some students every day load their trays with the fruits and vegetables, and other students never even look. And it's funny, it's often the little boys that walk right past the fruits and vegetables. So we have been working, the try-it days, part of that is encouraging students to try these items that they might not want to try otherwise. And then the monitors are very good about saying, you know, "I see you have three sections worth of pineapple, are you sure you're going to eat all of that? You know, don't take it unless you're going to eat it." And then when children come to us and say they're still hungry, we encourage them to go back to the salad bar and get more of the fruits and vegetables.
Rebecca, Lisa, and then Kent.
I was wondering if it would be possible, on the meal information section of the website, you have a wellness profile, but to talk about what each meal, like the caloric content and sodium and sugar and fat--
That's easy at the elementary school. At the high school, where there are so many options, it's more challenging. And I do have nutrient data on most of my elementary menus, but putting it on the menu itself--
Right.
--we don't do. I also have a notebook of all of the items that we purchase with nutrient data on it. And I've downloaded that and sent it to all the nurses, so if they have carbohydrate content questions, they can look that up.
But I think as a parent deciding, you know, am I going to slap together a PB and J this morning or let you have hot lunch, that would help me, and I think that would help a lot of other parents who might be hesitant because they're concerned about what the food is. So, you know, you can't put it on the menus, there's not enough room, but I think if it was on, under the meal information, you know, that would be the first place I would go to look, and, you know, if the chocolate milk has this much, but strawberry milk has this much, I think it would help parents, and I think you might see a boost.
I do have, or have seen a website where someone had, because our menus tend to be repetitious--
Right. Right.
She had a one-pager of the items that are always served, and the, most people want carbohydrate, protein, fat, and perhaps sodium. I don't think the vitamins and minerals are that interesting to people. We have to meet that criteria anyway to plan a reimbursable lunch. And also, just so you know, when we do analyze menus for nutrient content, we do it for the week, because a hot dog is going to throw that day off. But if you put the hot dog in context of a whole week, it makes a difference. And that's what the government expects us to do, is to analyze by the week.
Is it possible, though, to break down by meal? Because if, I know in our household, you know, he can choose two hot lunches a week, and I would like to have the information to help him choose the most healthy of the two. So I know that you need to report differently, but I think that would be a wonderful, I mean, everywhere is starting to have the list of everything in it, so people can make informed choices.
It's been on home, you know, things that you buy in the grocery store have been having that information for a long time.
Yeah.
And certainly, the one-pager where people could go and do a quick check--
That would be wonderful.
--I think that would be a wonderful thing to do.
Oh, I just wanted to say, not this past year, the year before, a few of us went on a tour of all of the schools in Portsmouth and ate with Pat in each of the cafeterias. And I just wanted to put a plug in there, I had five great lunches. And, you know, when people think, and I see that one of the challenges you're working on is institutional image, and when you hear school lunch and how it's portrayed in the movies and, you know, actually what my school lunch was at the school that I went to, this is completely different. There were, you know, a lot of good choices, fruits and vegetables, the milk was cold, the lettuce was crunchy, you know, the carrots were good and fresh, they weren't all white, and, you know, I mean, it was five good lunches, and so I think people, if they're questioning the quality of the lunch, you know, maybe they can get in there and actually have a lunch as well, so.
Thank you. That's a wonderful suggestion, and I have invited school board members to join us for lunch before. You're welcome anytime. And parents are, too. It's just that sometimes in the elementary cafeterias, it's so crowded, we encourage people to come for breakfast, because you get a little more room and more quiet, if you do that.
And I have volunteered at Little Harbor, so I do see what goes on there, and the kids really do eat healthy food. And, you know, the kids sometimes who bring it from home, who bring the really healthy food from home, they're trading food, even though it's not allowed. And, you know, and I also have to say, I've got three kids who do eat school lunch in there, very well-nourished, though.
Good. Thank you.
Kent?
Yeah, Pat, a couple of questions. First of all, I'm glad to see that the count was up that many more meals, and I haven't done the math on it, because we just got it tonight, but to be up basically over almost 13,000 meals is no small accomplishment. And do you have an average worth of those meals at the actual, I mean, some's going to be high school, some's going to be elementary school? Is it $2.50 on average? Is it $3.50? I know it'd be somewhere in a range of that.
Yeah, well, we do the $2.25, $2.75, and $3, and our participation is highest at the elementary levels. So $2.25 would be more of a fair number to use.
Okay, so that'd be about a $2.25, and I'm going to just put it as a plus.
And the federal reimbursement this year for a free meal was $2.68, plus 18 cents worth of commodities, and what's in the media is that is not what it costs to put out a meal. it costs to put out a meal. Most districts claim that it costs about three dollars or three dollars and ten cents to put out a meal, including your labor.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you're talking just product costs, basically, when you look at that. I think I've seen that report, and they don't put the labor totally in there. I think they give the labor a nickel, if I read right, back when.
Well, it also depends on what part of the country you're in, because some places pay their labor a lot less than we do in New England.
In stating that, again, seeing students stay on campus, I am not, and it's not any secret, I am far from a fan of open campus. I think it just opens way too many wrong behaviors, quite honestly. We've been very lucky in the last year with disciplinary hearings, and, but if you go back to the history of disciplinary hearings, normally our kids leaving campus, you know, better than seventy percent. So when I see that. So when we tag on with this twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight meals that you did, I also know that the high school culinary arts opened up a program which was highly successful, which again brought, you know, another venue of food, and I know it's may not, and I know it's not a true competitive, but it's a, it's another way to seduce the students to stay on campus to get it. Because I know people look forward to that, I guess, is it Thursdays or Fridays? I can't even remember.
Fridays.
Fridays, that they were doing that. So I'd like to get their numbers so that we know, again, there are a number of meals that are done at the high school, and I'd like to know if we can break down this twelve thousand extra meals, whether, you know, maybe, you know.
We have a meeting set up with Diane Canada later on in August, because we want to look at cooperation.
Yeah, but, and again, I'd like to get total numbers to see what we're trying to do to keep students on campus deep, because, you know, it's not healthy to.
The other thing that I'm curious about is all the students who sit in the high school cafeteria and aren't eating. And the other sad number is only half of the free eligible students at the high school eat their lunches. And why is that? Is it because they are in the clubs, and the extra help with teachers that occurs at lunch? Is it because they're not hungry at ten thirty in the morning? Is it because they're leaving after the next block and they're going to go home and have lunch? Or is it because it's not cool to eat at school? I mean, I don't know. I think it's all of those for a little bit.
Yeah, you know, we should strive, I mean, we strive for dropout rate to be zero, so we hang around one percent, two percent in Portsmouth. I think we should strive for as high on the meal as a hundred percent. There should be no child not eating those meals that are offered to them at this great price. Second item is purchase on the point sales. Left on accounts this past year, do we just roll that over to next year and only pay out those that are no longer? I mean, so it's a holding account, is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, the auditor, I have the capability of printing out, you know, how much negative and how much positive we are, and at the, in June, we were about nine hundred dollars in arrears, people who charged and didn't pay us back, and that's mostly at the elementary level. And then people who have money on account, and that was roughly five thousand. So he deducts that from, basically, it's an accounting thing. He takes it out and then he puts it back, because even though we have the money, it's, I don't know, Steve, you can explain that a little better.
It's actually deferred revenue entry, so that it's not counted as revenue in the current year, there's an adjustment made, and then we, you know, we make that entry, and then we reverse it in, you know, in September, so that the students still have access to that money, and we don't double count it, we don't count it as revenue until it's actually spent with us.
Next question along the same line is faculty meals. I'd like to see, you know, between now and maybe second meeting in September, how many faculty, I mean, there should be an accounting of how many faculty meals that were given.
I have those records, I do have the figures. Our faculty meals have gone down this year, but that's district-wide. Let's see, right here, it said, "Last year, my adult lunches money was fourteen thousand dollars, this year it's eleven-four." So, and we didn't change the prices. So I don't know whether faculty members are saving their money and packing from home, or if they're too busy to go and get lunch. You know, lots of times at the elementary level, that's what they tell us, is that they're too busy.
And what's the cost on a faculty meal now, three fifty?
Three fifty.
Yeah, okay, so it's three fifty, and we were down on those. Again, it's a captured audience, and for three fifty, I don't like giving, the fast-food chains, I was going to mention one, but any one of them, I don't think you can walk away from under five bucks, basically, you know, they're about.
I agree.
So, I mean, it's, again, an open opportunity. Next, we anticipate the same prices for breakfast and lunches in the second year in a row. I got to say, why?
Well, we've talked about this, and if you read what's happening around the country, because many people are out of work and not getting raises, it's just following the economy. If you read what schools are doing, Portsmouth is on the high end of what we charge for a lunch compared to some of the surrounding towns. So, and, you know, I think part of it is that, well, I've said this before, my salary comes out of the program, and in many districts, the director is part of administration, and the program doesn't pay for the director's salary, and that would make a difference in our positive numbers.
I guess because the, you know, food pricing indexes just, just came out, and I'm sure you've had them come across, you know, food's up almost three point five percent, even with a down economy, the cost of food, and they're saying, you know, there's less buying, so the prices, I mean, I know it just hit me across the board in this month trying to do these adjustments, and, you know, being up somewhere around three point five percent, I know that you get the government reimbursement, but again, even if it went up the nickel to, and I know we always like to compare, we're doing it with test scores, we do it with student outcomes, with surrounding communities, but when it comes to something like this, if it's the quality and the worth of it, I mean, I know we don't set that price for a little while, is that correct? I know we just did it during budget season, so we would see it again somewhere December, January, is that correct?
Normally, we change lunch prices in the summer, because shortly, my letters go out to parents as to what meals are costing. And I did discuss this with Ed and Steve, and, I mean, the option of increasing prices is always there, and most businesses will increase. If we were to increase, I think the government with the new child reauthorization is looking at eight cents a meal more that they're going to be giving us. If we were to raise the elementary lunch price, you know, by a dime, times the number of lunches that we serve, that's something. I would be hesitant to bump it up to the, say, two fifty at the elementary level, because every time you raise prices, you lose participation, and so that's why it was good to keep our prices steady last year, because we did sell a lot more meals. Breakfast is still an issue, we don't sell a lot of breakfasts. And I've written grants to try to get more novel ideas as to how to encourage breakfast eating, but a lot of people eat breakfast at home. So, your question was, should we be raising prices? That is a school board decision. I talked with Ed and Steve about it, and we kind of said we were going to hold.
But you wouldn't be objected if somewhere in November or so, we see an adjustment because of whatever the circumstances may be to.
Many districts do raise prices mid-year. It's not unheard of.
And I know when we compare, I mean, I know what Newcastle charges for a meal, and it's almost, I mean, and you're talking about a well-to-do community, you know, their meals are one of the cheapest, when you look at it out there, and I just know that that's because that's a choice that they make, that it's.
They subsidize.
They subsidize the meal. My last question for you is, what participation and input have you started with the middle school project? Because I know we worked very closely with you on the high school project, we had two plans, neither one of the plans actually ever totally went into full.
I've been meaning.
Army tents, never got opened up.
Yeah, the good thing, the army tents or the lunches in the parking lot didn't work, but at the middle school, I've been, Michelle, the manager, and I have met three times or so with the architects. Basically, we only have a certain place where the kitchen will be, so we've given them input about the equipment that we want and how we would like it to flow, and things that we think are important.
Because you're going to be interrupted for, and it's a little bit different than the high school, you're going to be basically interrupted for two years, offset as I read things, different periods of time.
Well, what they assured me is that they're going to build the kitchen, and then we're going to move into it, and then they're going to do other things, and how the students are going to get to us and where they're going to eat, those are the issues.
It's the where, yes, I think that's what I see, is that the where is probably the issue. It does seem like the flow from the chart is more of the kitchen and then working on it.
So it'd be sad to have a brand-new kitchen and have nobody be able to come to get to us, that.
That's, yeah. Thank you very much, then.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If I can prolong this.
Leslie and Tom.
Quickly, several times, my son went without a meal at the high school because his money had run out and he had forgotten to tell me. Is there a way to make sure that that doesn't happen? I mean, I know that's a lot to ask, but through the point-of-sale, or if we do do credit cards or something, is there a way to let parents know?
If we do the credit card plan, you can have your secret code and go look at your son's account anytime you want.
There's no way to flag it, though, or to let people know?
We tell the students, you know, we, I mean, I've heard the cashier say, "You only have a dollar left."
But at ten thirty in the morning, when your kid's getting home at six-thirty at night, that's long gone.
Well, if you could look at the account and just be sure it's up there, that, you know, that's another option.
But we don't have that capacity right now.
You cannot look at it right now, no.
Okay, thanks.
Tom.
So we need the EZ Pass auto-renewal.
Yeah.
EZ Pass doesn't do, that's, I mean, that's, we were just talking about, EZ Pass doesn't let you know until you get fined, they will not tell you.
Well, that's why you do the auto-renewal.
Right.
Oh, no, I do the auto-renewal.
Then you never, there's always money in the bank. The challenges, you know, you didn't necessarily address, are these things that you're presenting to the board, that you're looking for guidance from the board, or is this something that the subcommittee that's taking a look at nutrition in general is taking a look at? And, you know, you mentioned the image, the marketing, the equipment repairs and things like that, obviously, those have, you know, impacts in terms of your ability to sell. Is that something that you're putting towards the board for some guidance?
We have talked, every, ever since I've been here, these are my challenges, and, you know, this is, I'm just completing my seventh year in Portsmouth, so this is always there. The Wellness Committee is working with me on it. Marketing, I mean, I've met with the marketing classes at the high school, and they've tried to come up with some ideas for me, and, you know, I met with Jeff and the Student Council, and, because the high school is where I have the biggest challenge. The other sites are moving right along. And for the kids to talk about how wonderful it is to eat in the cafeteria, that's what I have to get to, and I can't do it myself, I need help. You know, some big districts hire marketing people, they come in and they brand their items, and they, I was just reading today about St. Paul, Minnesota, she has posters, they have billboards, they do things on people's phones, you know, I'm not that good. So, a plan, a marketing plan, is something I need, and I need help.
Okay, fair enough. This was a comment that was brought up a number of months ago about, that you just brought up about the number of people that you see that are not, you know, taking and eating lunch, specifically people that qualify for a free and reduced lunch, you know, why aren't they eating when they're either getting it for free or they're getting it at a reduced price? And the comment a number of months ago was made that, you know, there's a level of embarrassment that potentially plays into that role, and thinking about the point-of-sale system, you know, is that something that, not knowing and being familiar with it, is it something that can, you know.
That's why we put it at the high school first.
Okay, so that you, it doesn't matter, you can take your card, swipe it, and.
Or everybody does the PIN pad.
Put in a PIN number, and whether you're paying or not, it's, okay.
And they can go through all four lines, you know, we don't have a free-only line, because that's discrimination, we don't, they can go anywhere.
No, that's, no, that's all I was curious about, no, thank you.
One last question quickly. Does an EZ Pass-type program exist for, like, we joke about EZ Pass, but does that exist for kids, for a lunch plan?
Automatic payment of the account, I'm sure if we got PayPal or PayPams, or one of those systems out there, that you can arrange that, yes. We just haven't pursued it yet because we have to get the details fleshed out, but yes.
A few years ago, Abby Lockhart, our student rep, had started doing a survey at the high school, and I don't know where that information went, but maybe that's something we could ask our new rep to possibly look into, why kids don't eat? Is it that it's too early, is it that they go places, or, because I'm sure you would be the one to ask.
I personally have never eaten a lunch at Portsmouth High School, so I can't say, my parents make it for me, I'm like, I just, but my friends, I'm, being in a club, that's really hard to get down. I think we've talked about this before, the gates close really fast, and they like keep one or two open, there's not a lot of options. And then this year, we were introduced with off-campus, like we talked before, and that just opens up a lot of doors. So I would say, the older kids, you're going to have a really hard time, but we could get a survey going or something, and, we were talking at a salad bar, I mean, to have a salad bar, that'd be awesome, I could tell you so many of my friends, I would love to have like a visit, just be able to pick stuff, so.
So while this committee is looking into purchasing one, how we're going to monitor that, she thought we could get parent volunteers, because I don't have any extra labor, I don't know how well that's going to go, but we're talking.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks, Pat. Okay, moving on, we have the superintendent's report for today.
Yes, in your package, you have a copy of Board Administrator, which actually reveals superintendents evaluating the quality of the boards for which they work. The good news in that is some seventy-four percent rate their boards is effective, are highly effective.
So how are we doing?
Very effective, I think.
Oh, I thought that was part of the report out, or not?
The timely comment.
Curious. Yeah, right.
I want to share notice of employment, Shannon Grenya has been offered a contract to return at Portsmouth High School as the college counselor, and in addition, which we'll share with you this evening, Steve Barry, who was subject to a reduction in force, he was serving as Portsmouth High School's math interventionist, has been called back to serve as a math teacher under the callback provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. You have some notice of resignations, Ann McCarron, who's been at the middle school for the last eight years, has actually left us to go to a smaller elementary school in Milton, where she's going to kind of change what she teaches and become a reading specialist. And I also want to share with you that we got notice a day or two ago that Cindy Fitzgerald, who has seven years as a reading specialist at Don Darrow, has submitted her resignation. You have the policy committee minutes of July fourteenth. I was.
Just in regards with Ann leaving, and, you know, knowing Ann very well, I'm sad to see her leave, but that's a tough position in today's world, it's not one that colleges produce.
You are correct.
And so forth. So how do we stand, I mean, is there a partial person going in?
Well, you know, Mr. Stokel is very.
Mr. Stokel's going to do the position?
No, 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 he was on that immediately, because our college, the state colleges no longer offer that programming.
Yeah.
And yet, there was a couple of districts that were advertising, had looked for candidates, he solicited those schools, he actually brought a candidate in this morning, who's got all four certification out of the University of New Hampshire, and I think he's given it a couple of days to see what else flushes out, but, I mean, I think he's aggressively looking to fill that position, because I think you're right, Kent, it's difficult.
The dying position, which is odd, because as much as they want to put economics in, it is a portion of, if, when you look at it, it is an economics class for students to understand consumer home. I mean, it's one that should be relooked at, I believe, very closely.
Okay. Other questions before I finish?
Is that, that we offer that requirement to the state?
Yes, and so you see the irony a little bit later on when we talk about school approval. All four of our schools, the three elementary and the middle school, received two-year school approval through June two thousand thirteen. The high school's been conditionally approved, and one of the reasons is we're not offering the full course offerings in Family and Consumer Science that the standards require. You have difficulties in finding those people, and you're not allowed to, I would call it double-dip the course, i.e., for example, economics being offered through the social studies department then cannot serve as the required business credit. So you can't have crossover, nor can online courses be allowed, so.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah. That has to change.
So there are some certain requirements that the state has, but the good news in all of that is we did receive an email from the folks at the state who said, "We're not the only high school getting conditionally approved because of this requirement." this requirement." And they're going to do some study this year to see if, in fact, there might be some rethinking of those particular standards. So, other questions? Okay. I was asked by the chair to share with you the U.S. News and World Report as a result of last meeting's conversation regarding the methodology that they use to identify top-performing high schools. So you have that article in there. It's essentially a three-step process where they look at the state exams, look at better-than-expected proficiency levels with subgroups and the school in its entirety. And then if you make that threshold, then they look at how you prepare students for post-secondary education, largely international baccalaureate or advanced placement courses, which our high school offers many. I also shared with you an article as a result of the last decision and looking forward to our workshop session in September around budget. This comes out of a book, it's an excerpted chapter around making strategic resource decisions. It really talks about the three big strategies of successful districts, which I think we're perfectly aligned with, which is to say, improving teacher quality through professional development and collaborating, you know, with common planning time, using learning time strategically on core classes, and particularly creating that pyramid of interventions or that individual student attention to get all children to the benchmarks. So the article's kind of, I think, a precursor or a conversation we'll have in a few weeks, how districts are making use of these resources, some of the decisions they've actually made. So I think it hits in broad strokes, and it's pretty much aligned with the approach we took a year ago in development of the budget. And did I have anything else to say? Oh, I did. I wanted to, I got a call from Ms. Stevens today, actually an email, where some letters have gone out, and I want to explain that to the audience at home around school choice. All three of our elementary schools are in what we call school-in-need-of-improvement status. So Little Harbor, Dondaro, and New Franklin are. But as you know, Little Harbor lost its Title I status. And even though we pushed back at the DOE, the way they interpret the federal guidance is that we're required to offer school choice to the families of children at New Franklin and Dondaro to attend Little Harbor. Now, had Little Harbor been a Title I school with the other two, you'd have no choice at all. But the wisdom in this is that, you know, we have increased enrollments, we've got less resource at Little Harbor, yet the families are offered choice. So there's a two-week window that's out there. The window will close on Friday for families to tell us whether or not they're interested in moving. To date, I've received some eight requests, a subtotal of eight students who would like, you know, would like to exercise their choice option, have their children attend Little Harbor. I'll come back to you in the end of August at our next meeting with what the fallout of that is and how we're going to reallocate resource and deal with that issue. But, so letters did go out, they're required to go out, from both Dondaro and New Franklin to those families. I think parents, I guess, at Little Harbor might be concerned, why did this happen? It's really a requirement under the no child left behind law. So, Lisa, excuse me.
So if your child was receiving Title I services at New Franklin or Dondaro, you transfer, you're not getting those services anymore?
That's right.
And then at what point, in this letter, it says, "No child left behind has mandated a method for schools to use to determine how to prioritize which students can exercise school choice. If we have more students requesting a transfer than we're capable of handling?" How do you draw that line? I mean, you know, there are really high class sizes there. At what point do you say, you know, or do you bring in a trailer or do you move a teacher over?
Well, that's the point. I guess building capacity cannot be part of that formula.
So if you don't have desks in classrooms?
You still have to take the students.
Okay.
Exactly. And it's more, it's more complicated than this, but what I'd like to do is just see what Friday brings, let the dust settle, and then come up with a plan to, you know, address that. But I just wanted to alert folks, and I guess there's been some concern, I guess, on the part of some families who did not receive a letter. That's done appropriately, they're not to receive letters. Charlie had sent out a letter in April, Mr. Grossman at Little Harbor, to let folks know that they were a Cini school, but no choice option on their part to go elsewhere.
Kent, and then our backside.
That's crazy. You know, having read that several times, one of the things that I want to make sure is these, you know, whatever number of parents you end up with, is transportation is up to them, it is not part of, is that true still?
We have to provide the transportation under the sanction.
Right. All right, because originally, that was something that had been left because of the intercity obligations at that time, that it was not. So when and how did that change? I mean, I don't need it now, because I know that that was a big stickler when it first started. And now, now we have an issue this way, and if there's something that will cause disruption is actually the transportation of these students.
Mm-hmm.
So, some type of follow-up, because I know that originally that was, and...
My good friend, Mr. Zadovick, is a Nietzsche now in Japan, but he's pretty much an expert on this whole, on this whole application of the law. But clearly, the guidance is such that we have to provide the transportation when they exercise their choice option. And we did a year ago for some students.
See, I wonder if, if a parent just generally requested a student to go to a different elementary school with not being a school in need of improvement, I think you're still, you would be correct. They would be responsible for transportation, but probably since this is a federal issue.
It's gone back and forth. I know since, because Texas had a hell of a time trying to figure out what they were going to do. And in fact, one of the understandings that should be clear is this is only within its own district. They can't choose to go to Kittery or...
That's correct.
Or Rye or anything. And I know that discussion's been out there on a number of people's minds, not necessarily in Portsmouth, but just...
Well, when you have a singular school offering a singular grade span, there is no choice, just by configuration of the district. And that, you know, so in the case of Kittery or even back in Wells and Gunkwood, we ran just one K5 school, there was no choice option, you didn't worry about it. When you offer multiple grade config, you know, multiple buildings with the same grade configuration, then choice kicks in. That's the law.
But all three schools are designated the same?
All three are schools in need of improvement, that's true.
Right.
Rebecca.
I was just wondering how the families made this choice? Were they, was there a time for them to come in and tour the school? Or what kind of information did they get to help them make this decision? Or did they just choose?
I think many have exercised an option to go visit with the new principal at Dondaro. I know both Kate Callahan, the new principal at Dondaro, and George Shea had some input in crafting the letter that went home to parents. But the state also expects us to put certain language in. They have a template, and she expects us to follow that guidance.
And then I wonder, I know that it's impossible at this point to have the bus routes done, but if someone from one of the other schools decides to go to Little Harbor, I'm assuming there's a possibility that they have to get on the bus much, much earlier because of the whole transportation issue. And I'm just wondering if, if there's more information out there to help parents either decide to or not? And after the Friday deadline, can they recant their decision?
Of course.
If they're a week into the school, a month into the school year? I mean, when, are they locked in at any point?
So once you commit your child to that school, because one of the questions that was asked is what about younger siblings who come along? And so the quickest our schools could be out of Cini status is two years from now, 2013. However, if they are out of Cini status, then their subsequent children coming along could not exercise choice.
But could that...
Yeah, got children in two different elementary schools.
But could that child, say it was a second grader, and in two years they're out, so they're in fourth grade, are they then sent back to their original school? They continue their career?
No, once you commit to a Cini, you know, exercise your choice option, it's good for the full grade span.
And then, when, can a parent decide to go back to their home school at a certain point? Or once they're locked in, are they locked in?
No, they can go back, I'm certain they can go back.
Okay.
Even in mid-year? Well... That's your question, like even in mid-year?
Yeah, like if they go for the month of September and they realize that they're... Well, so that's my question, is, I want to make sure these parents come to the school, know what time their child's going to have to get up, know all the information, because that's a, that's a big change.
That's true.
And I would add, I think that's a good point, because I would also add that they must realize that they're probably going to, their kids will probably be in some of the largest classes in the city, class sizes. Because Little Harbor is...
I mean, and certainly not to discourage anyone, because it's the law and it's their right and their choice, but I just, yeah, to make sure that parents have all the information. Yeah.
Kent?
Just to go back on the transportation thing, I know one of the ways that we handle it with St. Pat's, and I don't know if we're still doing it, because we were obligated to do that. Do we still transport students to St. Pat's?
A few.
A few. Is that the way that it had been done for a number of years, is that we had...
It's on a space-available basis.
Yeah.
So the biggest issue is, for last year, they went and changed their start time, so their kids get there late.
Yeah. Well, and to follow with that is that what we used to do, and again, it's not a discouragement, it's a budgetary thing, is that if you were going to St. Pat's and you needed to, you needed to be at the Dondaro school to get to St. Pat's, if you were in that neighborhood, you needed to get New Franklin school, or however it was. That's how we managed it for a lot of years, where we had 20 to 30 students riding the buses, is that we have to provide transportation, we don't have to provide door-to-door transportation on it. And again, it's not a discouragement, it's more of a budgetary type issue that we're going to run into.
Well, we're required for that, for that as, on a space-available basis. We don't have to, to add routes or incur extra costs.
Right.
It's just if we have the capacity. So there are very few kids that ride the bus to St. Pat's.
But I'm saying for this, if a student, parent choice, that we need to, because transportation could be a very cost-prohibitive issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, last comment I was going to just make is, I would encourage the administration to, you know, take a look at the parents and families that are looking to move, because ultimately, you know, we believe we've got three-grade elementary schools. I would tend to believe that as you pull, you know, peel the onion back, you know, there are specific issues that people might have that could be addressed, that would enable these people to stay where they are, versus having some perceived notion that something is better, the grass is greener, and that, you know, by that outreach, you know, we could remediate, you know, this issue versus talking about the fact that we got to do all this stuff, you know, we might be able to quietly, you know, address this issue and move on. So in August, you know, we don't have a lot to report.
So basically, the question is, is there an opportunity for you to meet with each individual?
Well, I think that, yeah, I think, I think we'll share that with the principals, they'll do outreach and they'll, yeah, revisit, absolutely. That was part of our, thank you, thank you for that.
Great. Okay, moving on, thank you very much. Cars, what else do we have?
I think that's it, I already addressed this Department of Ed's school approval piece. So it's a district report from Mr. Bartlett.
Okay, I handed out what is stamped, hopefully, very prominently, as a very preliminary draft of the results, because it's still a lot of moving parts. However, as we originally talked about and emphasized, we had identified a number of areas where we knew there would be savings and a number of areas where we knew there would be overages. The idea was to, or the soft freeze, was to try to control the movement so that in the end, we would come out on the positive side. One of the things that we did near the end, when it, when it, as we were able to, you know, make changes, partway through June, was to sit down with the administrative team and the principals and say, "Okay, it's now, now time, unfortunately it's June, but we'd be giving you an opportunity for the release funds to, to be spent." Based on the, I think the discussion that the board has had all year long, if, you know, if we had extra money, we'd like to establish a technology fund and et cetera. Based on, I think based on the outlook for future budgets, trying to put together a fund, the concept would be to have it be sustainable and put so much in, is probably not going to happen. So therefore, it would end up being a situation where you, you clean it all out. So, working with the administration and talking to city manager and, and the tech department, they agreed that what they wanted to do with their unspent funds was to pool them together and come up with some technology replacements now. And so that's precisely what we did. So as a result, you'll, you'll see a couple of areas that, that appear to be way overspent, particularly in 177. And that's because, that's, that's where that, the money was pooled. There will be some, you know, positive balances in other areas of the budget, but because we agreed to pool it, we, instead of trying to go and hit every little line, we put it in the window to identify it. So there are a couple of items which we knew were going to be over. For example, you know, we knew dental insurance is going to be over, we knew that we would probably be over in retirement. A number of the areas and salary balance each other off, where we have extra money in teacher salaries because of people being out and we had substitutes in, so the substitutes overspent. Same thing on the custodial line, we had a number of people out. So those pretty much balance each other off. I think the most, one of the most significant overages, which we had predicted, and again, this is based on encumbering funds, based on the estimated expenses for special ed, some of them which don't come in until the end of the summer, just because of the, because of the way the agencies work, they're always in arrears with billing. So you can see on page two, down near in the total, the total special instruction, you can see that the out-of-district tuition, as predicted, was over. That's not something that we, you know, that we did intentionally. And in district-wide adaptive services, we had some needs for, some 504 needs this year, which we hadn't had in the past. 504 is special services, but they're for non-identified kids. So that was, that was unanticipated at budget time, but became apparent that we're going to have some needs throughout the year. So that's one reason why that particular line is over. But you can see, if you go through technology plan, that was a planned overage based on the pooling of the resources. And in, I guess in spirit of what the board's intent was, you know, I was asked to try to manage the savings. And I think, you know, the spirit of what, what the intent was on the board for technology, I think that has been met. So the end result is the way we sit right now, we're within, you know, just under $4,000 of spending the entire budget.
Two comments. One, through, I guess, both good fortune in the energy usage this year, which was under budget, but also through the administration's good management of this, we were able to add another $189,000 in the technology, which is terrific. What I'd ask is that at our next meeting, we get a report out to show exactly what the intent is of that, because that's double what our budget was this year. And 60 or 70% more than what we spent last year in technology. So I think it's important, I mean, that's a significant improvement in, in our technology position. And I think it would be helpful for the board and the community to understand sort of how we actually spent that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the short answer for that is that it was an acceleration of existing, everything, everything that we sat down and discussed fits in with the picture and was tempered by the time that's, that's taken place between the thought of it and now. There were some adjustments made on advances in technology. There were adjustments that were made in terms of, of what's planned for the middle school and where it sits, and how the 21st Century Learning Grant came to the middle school. So there were some adjustments, and it, and I'm happy to, to report that I think that it was a cooperative effort by all the principals and staff, and that everybody's going to come out with, you know, a positive result there. It was, we were, went out of our way to make sure it was a balanced effort for everybody. And because I, you know, it's somewhere you sit there and say, "Well, I had this amount unspent, I had, if we pull it all together, am I going to get the short end of the stick?" Well, I assure you that I don't think anybody ended up in that position. We were very, you know, we spent an awful lot of time putting this together.
Yes, Kent?
You know, just getting this tonight, in the meeting that we had two weeks ago, you know, this is something I know that I hope we can use as a template, and I know, as Steve said, this is preliminary and is very preliminary, because there are items that because there are items that stick out that I would go back and want. Again, we don't have overtime, per se, on anything. Our overtime, though, is what I look at as substitutes. And we're 106. I mean, that's major dollars towards something that we have to correct.
We're aware of that.
Then, the other one that catches me, that I need a clarification on, and not necessarily tonight, is that you do have the overage on the computers, and that was an offset, or technology. What kind of grabs me is that then I go back up and go through K through 12 computers, and I have another $15,364. And to me, that's the same part of my, I know it's not. But it's the same part when you look at it as the general public, technology is technology. And so, that would be one that I'd like to see us go back. As much as we're talking about out-of-district being up, as we go into these preliminary budget discussions that we had like two weeks ago, I'd like a breakdown of what those were, that 144, how that broke down to it. Because then when we go down to special education, we don't only have that, but then we have tuition, other LEAs, which is way over then. Well, it's odd, because if you do the actual budget, it's spot-on dollar, but when you do it, it comes out as a variance of $136,800. So, I don't know, again, the breakout of those two numbers at some point.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm sorry, special ed line 130, 1,330.
All right, if you look at, that's the cutoff, that's Fund 27.
Correct.
Cost Center 207.
Yeah, and again, I don't need, because we just got it tonight, these are general questions that pop out of me and probably others will too, as time goes over. And again, one that we have to go back and sell to the city council and the city itself is, you know, line 188, the maintenance being over $92,000. We know, but the public doesn't, so if we had a breakdown of what we, you know, was it a, you know, flood? I mean, we had the ice storms or whatever it may be that caused that overage. Or, the discussion comes up, you know, and I know that the JVC's dealing with that air conditioning issue. You know, is there a portion of that, is air conditioning at the high school? I mean, what is the overage? To have the numbers is nice.
Get it for you, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's just a breakdown.
That's fine, Kent, absolutely.
By the next time, I think we said our next budget meeting we have is September?
Second, second meeting in the month, yeah.
So, it's like the 28th?
Yeah, so by then, if we have those numbers prior, it'd be nice to look at.
Yep, I can do that.
So, Steven, could you just remind us and everyone, when the soft, what was the thinking behind the soft freeze? Again, I know we've done this, and roughly, when it was put into place?
The thinking behind the soft freeze was, we knew and crossed our fingers that we would have energy savings based on what we'd achieved for rates, new rate negotiations. What we didn't know was what the weather was going to do. So, therefore, if we had a serious degree day issue, we might not have had those savings. And we also knew we were going to be over in special ed, which proved, you know, in the general fund area. And those, you know-
And retirement.
And we had retirement. So, based on those issues, we wanted to make sure that we set aside enough to cover the worst-case situation. As, and I did state that we started letting people expend more money in June. But I have to admit, on a selective basis, depending upon what the subject was previous to that, if things, as things became more clear, dribs and drabs went out. So, was, you know, that's why I called it a soft freeze. Because we were trying to do it and work our hardest to have the least effect on classroom instruction. And which is one of the reasons why, again, to answer part of Kent's question, is that some of the maintenance issues is because we held back on that and took the ones that had a high priority from a safety standpoint. And as things became better, we had a couple of them that we needed to do that are still, are going to be safety issues in the future, that we added to that mix. So, that forced that a little higher. But again, they're, you know, they're all projects that are high on the, you know, safety issue as opposed to, you know, comfort issue.
Okay. And one other quick question about the technology money. So, you're saying, you'll come back to us with how the money's been spent, but this was an administrative council decision? I mean, everybody together agreed?
Yeah, all, absolutely, right.
Okay.
Everybody, yeah, I mean, we had, we took input from them and they came up with a list. We analyzed that for fairness, and then we vetted it with our technology staff to make sure that it fit in with the plan. And that there wasn't something that, you know, non-techies had missed.
Right.
Yeah, this is great, it's going to be a great news story as we head into the fall.
It will. So, just, let's see where we are. So, just before we move on, I just want to back up, I have one question about the provisional, conditional approvals for high school.
Sure, yeah.
So, it lists three things. One, we talked about family consumer science program. The business ed program, meaning we offer five credits, but we need to offer more?
Well, that, yes, not CTE, exactly.
Things that are not covered in other areas.
That's right.
Specifically, we need to offer more in business ed. And then, what's the other, what's the courses offered? You call 45 credits table, what is that? Do you have anything off the top of your head?
I don't, I made a copy of her email, which I received back, which says that "You're required to offer at least five credits in business education, three in business communication, one credit in accounting, banking, and finance, and one credit in business economic education." When she looks at the PHS program of study, she notes one credit in intro to business and one credit in an accounting course. Any of these courses used to meet these requirements cannot also be used to meet another standard's requirements.
Cannot.
Cannot. And so, if you're using it for social studies, then it can't be used for business. If you're using it for business, it can't be used for family and consumer sciences. And so, you've got all these courses out there, and we're just trying to say, and CTE courses don't count as well. So, the culinary arts course, in other words, will not count as family and consumer science.
Right. So, what is it that the school needs to do?
Well, I think we need to advocate strongly to maybe have them change the standard a little bit. It's my first thinking on this, and I sent it to Principal Collins and asked him to weigh in on this and give me, because we marshaled an argument to get school approval on what we currently offer. And they wrote back and said, "No, you know, it's not." But we are going to look at it this year. Otherwise, you're going to have to up the course requirements in family, consumer, business courses, and whatever that other item was, and I wasn't quite clear on that Mitch, that 45 credit piece.
And this comes with extra funding from the state?
I don't believe so.
Just trying to make a point, I got it.
Here's the Kent.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Steven. New business.
Yes, you have three policies, just the first reading this evening, no action required by the board. Basically updating our responsible technology use policy. You have a change at the request of the high school administration to the drug and alcohol policy to include over-the-counter drugs. And then, as a result, there's some legislative changes this spring to the troiancy law, just some modest adjustments to your attendance policy. So, they'll come back August 24th for a second in approval.
Rebecca, and then Kent.
I just, I have a couple of questions on the first two policies. Under digital citizen, users will select names that are appropriate and consider the images that are posted. Are those images that the citizen posts? Or are they to just consider-
Where exactly are you reading?
The, under digital citizen, respect oneself. Users will select names that are appropriate and will consider the images that are posted. Does that mean consider images that they post? Or just consider all of the images that are online?
I take that literally to mean that one posts of themselves.
That they post, okay. And then, under the second one, respecting others, about using technology to bully. I know we have a bullying policy. Can we somehow say, see the policy from more detail or somehow cross-reference them?
We could. The, that's another major policy that's coming up. The bullying policy is new law. And we've been advised that there has to be some community input about this, and that you have to train staff around bullying now, it's a new requirement. We have nine months to implement that, which is March 2011. So, the council, we've been given by New Hampshire School Boards, is there's a major forum, if you will, on the law and how to draft the policy in early September. And so, I wouldn't want to do it now, because the policy's going to be reworked, so.
Okay. Under the next one, protecting oneself and others, users will protect themselves by not forwarding inappropriate materials, but what about not putting their information out there? Because that's a huge thing about protecting. Don't put your last name, don't say that you're going to be somewhere at 5 o'clock. I just wonder if that should be in there. I know when we had the presentation from the middle schooler about all the wonderful things they were doing, they, in that program, they weren't allowed to post their photo with their user profile as a safety measure, but it was, they submitted an image that they felt represented themselves. Just a thought, I don't know if that's, you know, I don't know if we need to get into that level of detail. Under expectations, the third sentence, I believe, talks about digital storage and electronic devices used for school purposes. What about personal electronic devices using the school's bandwidth? Is that, I, because I don't think I saw anything about personal devices. So, if I come in with my iTouch, but I'm using your server-
Right. It says the use of electronic devices should be consistent with school department's educational objectives, mission, and correction. On the next page.
And what would that include? Electronic devices used for school purposes. I just, I just want to make sure that we have an expectation that when kids bring their own, which they do.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, the very last one on the next page, the use of computing resource for commercial activities or lobbying. What if there is a student group or a student club that has made t-shirts and they're selling them for their cause? Or what if, you know, we have the Young Republicans or the Young Independents? Is that now, I don't know if there are those groups. I don't, I don't want us to let them do that, and when they do, are violating the policy. That's it for my comments for that particular.
Just to add on to that, I mean, is the definition and the delineation, you know, a school activity versus a personal activity? Because if you're selling something for a school club, would that not be considered a school activity versus, you know, me personally trying to have personal gain?
But technically, you're violating the policy by doing that.
To raise money for a club, is that what you're saying?
To use, use of computing resources for commercial activities, so I'm using their-
School.
I think that's for personal gain, I mean, that's how I read that, is personal gain. Not for a club or something like that in the school. I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because I'm assuming, and I'm thinking more at the high school level, you know, if Mr. Collins sees this and it's appropriate, he's going to allow it. I just want to make sure that we're not violating our own policies with things.
No, no.
Okay, Kent.
I'm going to jump to the drug and alcohol. And again, I know we're only at first reading, but there are a couple of things that I just want to clarify, so when we come back, we can have more of a discussion. In paragraph four, it somewhat covers what I want to ask, but I know it's been an issue, and I think we need to make it more clarified. "No student shall enter Portsmouth School Department property or attend school-sponsored activities in possession of or under the influence of controlled substance, drugs, drug-related paraphernalia, or alcohol, including vehicles parked on the school property that are under control of the student." One that I know that has continued, and it goes with the nuance of now getting to prescription drugs and over-the-counter such as aspirin, Tylenol, is that those extended field trips and/or school trips such as going overseas and so forth, I think we need to clarify that there has to be, whether it's in procedures or where, that there is an individual that will hold prescriptions and drugs that are needed, because that becomes very diluted, even those are school-sponsored. And if Sally offers Johnny a Tylenol and Johnny's allergic to Tylenol or, you know, whatever the drug is, it does run into an issue. I think it has to be clarified that, you know, I know we've had this issue on our band trips in the past. You know, these are, again, and then have a clarification of how that is done, so.
So, I believe, and I'll double-check this for the board, but there is a policy on administering medicines and medications in schools, and that it provides for how that would happen on a field trip.
In fact, there is. But it needs to be an attachment towards this or a reference towards this, because it is not followed. And time and time again, I know for a fact that it's one that needs to have-
I get, I get your point.
Yeah, that if we say that it goes with, I think it's section 5B or something like that, that it should be followed during those times, so that there is not confusion. I've always, way back when, under like the first offense, had some mixed feelings. And again, this is just opinionated for me, is that we've handled this very well, we've cut back on the number of disciplinary hearings, and I think overall, it's worked. What always sticks in the back of my mind, the only thing that sort of saves us in regards to this, to a degree, is under first offense, second paragraph, after the three bullets, is the second sentence in there. "The superintendent may impose additional days suspension if he/she determines that the student and/or the parent or guardian is not reasonably cooperative with the implementation of the recommendations." What I don't think we do have there is that, you know, first offense, it could be a student doing experimental, we all know that's going to happen. But first offense could also be that somebody's just gotten away with it for a number of times, and he or she is distributing to a degree, and we have a higher severity of that. First offense is a very broad thing that, and we've had had this discussion, you know, one student doing it once and being handled versus a student getting caught and doing more than what they is. I think, I'm never, and again, I voiced this back about eight years ago, I'm voicing it now, that I think that the superintendent should have even a little more control over this to administer if it is a larger situation than just a first offense.
The policy is probably not, it's a modest change to your original policy, so there may be, there's other issues that need to happen. But the second page makes a distinction between use-
We separated it out.
...to selling, distributing, or transfer of controlled substance. So, on the second page, Kent?
Oh, yeah, no.
It has a whole different set of penalties for that piece, which I think is what you were getting.
Well, and again, when I go on to the second page, I'd like to see the superintendent being allowed more latitude on the severity. Again, a student experimenting, a student, you know, whatever it may be. If it's a bigger issue, it makes the headlines.
So, I'm sorry, Kent, you're asking for it to be more flexible so that the penalty can be more severe than what we've written here?
The superintendent has more discretion.
Based on what the superintendent-
Absolutely, and I think we've always pigeoned our whole, I mean, it used to be first offense and we were having, the reason we changed this is that we just were constantly meeting as a board with disciplinary hearings. And I don't want to see us return to that, because it has gone well, because those that come before us know the penalties. What, again, we've been fortunate is, is that we haven't had something that might be larger and that the superintendent needs that allotment of making a decision, plain and simple. And I feel sometimes, somebody's going to read this, lawyers are lawyers, and some, we all know they show up with their lawyers at these meetings. And I just want to make sure the superintendent has the authority to do something if it is larger.
Well, it does say, "The superintendent may impose additional days of suspension if he or she determines the student and/or the parent or guardian is not reasonably cooperative."
Yeah, that's what I read, and I read that, but again-
You want something more than that?
I'm afraid of always the big incident happening, and somebody's going to just wave, "Well, we have a policy and it's the first offense." And it's a really more tragic thing. I'll say it, if a student were to pass away because of something, that, and it's the first offense, we're going to come down on the board saying, "We weren't tough enough." So, again, allowing the superintendent some movement there that it was-
We'll go back in with Kathleen, Mr. Wire, and see what we can-
Just a question on, I mean, is the, I don't, I don't read the, the policy as acquiescing any latitude that the administration might have outside of what the policy states. You know, so, it's a matter of whether you document and write down everything, which I think has some challenges, because, you know, you then are- you then are subscribed to what that policy is written as versus having a certain amount of latitude that the administration inherently has.
Yeah, but, but again, having gone to literally over 300 hearings in, in my time, a lawyer up, and again, now that it's gone this way to the first offense going there, I don't know how often they show up with their lawyer, you know, with the superintendent and the principal there. Do they often have a lawyer with them?
An advocate, I wouldn't say an attorney, no.
No. Okay. And, and again, it, it's just protection for, it's the one time we don't cover ourselves.
Concern is of the first offense, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, and just allowing it, and again, it's been handled extremely well.
Okay.
My second question goes more towards the superintendent directly, is under the truancy and attendance policy, um, I'm going to say it, I hope we adhere to this, because we don't currently. I think we have those that do get, uh, the policy thrown at them, and then we have those that don't. And I believe more so it's always high school, more than it is at the lower grades, it might be a little bit than middle school. But I, I get a number of people that have said, why is somebody else treated differently? And, and it's not singular, it's, it's multiple out there. And I think others have heard that. I actually see the student rep shaking her head over there, that, that, I, I didn't know if she was agreeing or not, but, you know, the policy should be for all students and not-
Absolutely.
If we do it, again, the policy runs into, students won't misbehave with their attendance if, if we track down on every single one.
So it, do you have an issue with the policy or the procedure?
Not the policy. As a matter of fact, I like the way the policy is now.
You're talking about implementing.
But implementing has to be done every single time equally.
Lisa, and then Ann.
Um, I had one question on the drug and alcohol use by students. Um, I know that controlled substances are addressed in the fourth paragraph, but it seemed to me that maybe, um, controlled substances also should appear right in that first paragraph? The use of use possession being under the influence of unauthorized prescription drugs, over the counter drugs, or alcohol, or controlled substances.
And I think in fact that it was, and I think when Kathleen reworked this, that she just left it out accidentally, so.
Because I felt like where I was looking for that. And then, um, on, um, under the disciplinary actions, um, when we say suspension in, in any of the cases, um, does that include suspension in school suspensions, if that happens to be what is best in that situation? Um, is that broad enough that, does it have to be an out of school suspension? Could it be an in school suspension if that is what was determined to be in the best interest of the student?
I, I, well, it's a great question, because I don't know the extent to which they have in school suspension at the high school. I think typically they've been out of school suspensions.
Okay.
And, and, but, but it raises an issue about where this might happen and with what grade level, and then what the appropriate discipline might be, you know?
Yeah, I just think, you know, in the few instances we've dealt with, you know, we've just tried to consider all the different factors-
That's right, exactly.
And want to do what's in the best interest of everyone.
So it doesn't say out of school, it just says suspension from school.
So that would include that.
So I see that as liberal enough to handle.
Okay, and then, um, on the attendance policy, just when you define the half day absence, I think it's curious that, um, at the high school, if you've missed more than 15 minutes of any block, you lose the whole block as far as, um, you know, what people were, will record. So, you know, if you're intrinsically motivated and want to get the course material, you'll go right back to school, but I worry about sort of an unintended consequence of a kid saying, oh, you know, I'm 20 minutes late, why should I go back for the other 70 minutes?
And we actually had a conversation about that, Ed, do you remember?
I might, I might have stepped out then, but I-
So I just, I'm curious as to the logic in that, it just seems to set up a, a dynamic.
I agree with you. Um, I think a lot of this came from what the-
High school.
High school wanted.
Okay.
What the grade principals wanted.
Because if you miss two blocks in 15 minutes, then you are counted absent for the whole day. So where is your, you know, motivation to go back for the other one, you know, 90, you know?
I think it's a good point.
Three hours of your time.
I mean, they're trying to use it as an incentive, but yet, when does it cross the line and become a disincentive?
When your appointment takes a little bit longer than 15 minutes.
That's my point.
Well, that's not an unexcused absence, though, let's be clear, that's, that's an excused absence.
Okay.
An unexcused absence is you wander in at 20 past and your teacher says where you've been.
Okay.
Well, I don't really know.
Right.
That's unexcused, but an excused absence-
That's a good clarification.
Where you come in 15 minutes late with your doctor's note, that, you're not absent that day.
Okay. But do you get a half day?
I don't know.
Okay.
If it's excused, do you, are you still counted absent?
Because my kids have-
Well, you're absent, it's an excused absence.
But it's excused.
And it doesn't trigger the truancy piece.
Exactly, it doesn't trigger the-
That's, that's the issue with this policy, is what triggers truancy.
Right.
Okay.
Almost anything can be excused.
Right, exactly.
You know, families can have planned vacations, they have doctor's appointments, they do any number of things, and, and so the requirement in the law was to define what's an excused and unexcused absence and what constitutes truancy then.
Gotcha.
And so I think you're right, and it's not as clear as it might be, but I think that's the intent.
The high school did determine that.
Yeah.
That's what they want.
But you're the policymaker, so if you-
I mean, I'll, I'll give you examples. I mean, you have students that are out sick and then all of a sudden show up on the, uh, on the gridiron or the soccer field or the field hockey field, if they were sick early in the day, and, and we've got to cut back, I mean, that's not a fairness to those that are, are doing it. I mean, absolutely, Leslie's right, if it's an excused absence, and believe me when you have students going to college and having to, you know, go, they're excused and so forth, it's those that become chronic and those that, you know, are not playing by the rules. And this is one where it comes to truancy and/or absence, you know, it starts to show a pattern of a student's behavior. I mean, you can look at those and pretty well see those that are playing it, as long as it's administered, the same for everybody.
I had, I had one thing.
Oh, you have one more?
Yeah, and just when you said the excused absences, a family trip is not, under this policy, an excused absence, which could also set up some unintended consequences.
It's, well, the language is suspected that parents and legal guardians will not schedule vacations when school is not, when, when school is in session.
Right, but then when it defines excused absences, there are, you know, no planned family trips and, you know?
I think the, the point of the, you know, the, the logic behind the policy is to just-
Get the truancy.
Yeah, to deal with the truancy issue. You know, if you call the high school and say, you know, we're going away for a week, can I take my kids work with me?
You won't be considered truant.
That's fine, you're not considered truant. You're considered truant if they disappear and nobody calls and suddenly you're gone for a week, and, you know, the grade office is calling where is so and so. I think that's the policy point, that, you know?
Right. Ann.
I, I think I'd like to make the distinction between policy and procedure. Uh, and Kent, to your issue with the trips, uh, I, I've been involved in trips and there is a designated person, in many cases a nurse, who, who deals with all kinds of medication, over the counter, everything. And, and it's very clearly stated that you, the child does not have any of their own, they need to go and see this person in terms of that.
And that's not been followed through any-
It's very, very clear. But our job is to deal with the policy, and the procedure is a whole different matter. We cannot be listing every possibly this, or this, or this, or this, that's, that's not the job of policy. So, uh, I'd like to make that distinction.
And I'm all aware of that. I'm just saying that if we don't follow the procedure, the policy has no legs.
So, so maybe the procedure or it's administration, somebody needs to be dealing with that. So somebody needs to say that to the people involved rather than us.
Rebecca.
Um, when, I just have a question, when Kent said that there have been times when kids have been out and then they're on the field that evening, um, once upon a time there was a policy, and I don't know if it's in the arts and athletics contract, but if you were not in school that day, you could not participate.
I think you're right.
Still is.
I think it's there.
I think it's still there.
So then, in theory, if you're not in school, you should not participate. And again, I think it comes down to administration applying our policy instead of us micromanaging the policy. So if this is something we, the administration needs to have a discussion about, then I think they should.
Coaches perhaps. Coaches.
Okay. All right, so that's first reading. We are thorough. Um, and then there is something under B.
Oh.
For, uh, discussion of air conditioning at the Portsmouth building.
All right, so, so the school board has a draft document that I basically would like to forward along to the joint building committee, um, which in, in essence responds to a request from them to understand the school department's rationale for wanting air conditioning at the middle school. So ideally, if the board is in agreement, I, I'd be able to take this document and make any changes you'd like and be able to bring it back, ideally tomorrow evening. Um, and really, all I've tried to do is capture our efforts to provide extended learning time, share with you kind of the summer, uh, special ed programming that goes on, um, as well as the, uh, some of the community partnerships that we enjoy and how they take advantage of that, as well as, um, some of the special education and 504 accommodations that we can find ourselves or confronted with where air conditioning is preferable. So it's a document that, um, John Stokel, Steve Bartlett, and I worked to put together and would really like to just bring it back, as long as it's by consensus where-
Do you want a motion?
With the school depart-, I don't know if you need a vote on it per se, but-
Okay, I, I would recommend you do this.
Okay. Rebecca.
I just want to be really nitpicky about PMAC, it's, it's music and art, it's not camp.
Right. Oh, I thought I was told, um, it was a music and art center.
Music and art center.
Center, here, I'm sorry.
But the camp at the middle school-
I think it's a camp at the middle school in the summer.
Okay, the way I read it was PMAC, an art camp?
No.
Instead of a, okay.
Versus the-
PMAC is much more than just an art camp.
Right, but it was a summer program, that was the-
Right.
Okay.
They had music camp.
Right.
Kent.
And I think it's a great, good document. The issue comes under, and I like that you put the community programs, because we had discussed this the last time, that this is not, I mean, whether it's PMAC, whether it's, uh, men's league, uh, summer basketball, that they will have to pay for use of that, just like we have done at the high school when they want the ballet, uh, New England Ballet, that we've, we've charged them for air conditioning. If it gets turned on, I know Steve has dealt with that unfortunately many a times, uh, on it, but again, I think you need to point out that this is not a free service to these organizations that want to have it. That there is a charge to it, and that, that will lower the cost, is that correct assumption, Steve? Not lower the cost, but we're, the citizens of Portsmouth aren't picking up for that.
Well, what, basically what happens is, we have the last couple of years adjusted and used it very judiciously at the high school, and then when we've had event, private rental events that, that request it or require it, it's, it's, there's a surcharge to the rental fee. So that, so again, the taxpayers aren't subsidizing something that we don't allow ourselves to use that freely.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Uh, I, I really, I mean, I think, uh, the document's well laid out, uh, puts our case forward. Uh, I will just make a comment that while I support, uh, the, the concept of having AC, uh, it's not paid for, you know, yet. Um, and, uh, one of the things that we have to really consider is that, you know, where is the money going to come from? And while I know that, uh, you know, the, the school year, uh, is potentially going to be extended, as, you know, we look at this building is going to be around for, uh, many decades, I also look at the fact that there are a couple steps that we can look at where, one, you know, the ducting and pumping, uh, can be appropriately sized and that the, you know, compressors and chillers can be added at any time. So I think there's, you know, it's not just a, you know, let's just put air, air conditioning in, while I believe it needs to be there, it is something that can be done in a couple steps, because, you know, we don't have the funding yet, it's got to be coming from somewhere. Um, and so there could be a couple of different things that could be looked at, so.
Yeah, thanks.
So, I mean, let's just be clear in how this process works. Um, the joint building committee, um, goes through an iterative value management process as the designs get refined and as the costs become better known. And one of the things that the JBC asked, um, the school board to do is lay out, um, the rationale for why air conditioning is an important part of the education program. And I think Ed and, um, John and Steve have sort of done that with this document. But all that does is directionally tell the JBC what's important. I mean, we will still have to, as a committee, go through that iterative, um, evaluation process as the costs get better refined. And this doesn't mean that, that air conditioning is absolutely in or absolutely out, it just helps give guidance to the, to the JBC as it makes its decisions. Um, and it may be that, um, as we do that, we have to come back to the school board if, if we're, if we're, um, considering reductions in the original program that they affect the education program for this board's review and consideration. And, and all that means is that, in fact, the air conditioning would be part of it because this, this board, if, if they agree with this, has said this is, is an important part of, of our education program. So there's going to be more, this, I view this as sort of a direction, giving guidance and direction at the JBC, um, and, and we'll learn more, I mean collectively, we'll all learn more as we, as we go through the balance of this year. And I'd say by, um, by the end of this year, for sure, we will know, um, with great confidence what the, what the building and the program, it will look like.
Mm-huh. Okay, so, um, so is this document sufficient from the JBC perspective?
From, from my perspective, based on what, um, my understanding is what the JBC was looking for is yes, it really is, because it really does lay out, um, both the, some of the, uh, federal and, and state mandates that require air conditioned space, as well as, uh, current, uh, school programs, as well as community programs that, um, use that facility during the summer, or potentially could use that facility during the summer. So I think in fact it does accomplish what the JBC was asking.
So does the JBC need anything more than just this from the administration?
I don't think so. So my, my view is that if directionally, and, and we can choose to vote on this or not, but I think as a board, if directionally we're all comfortable with this, then, um, we can take, then I can take this back to the JBC tomorrow night at our next meeting.
Okay. So, but why don't we take a motion that we-
Well, I, I think you don't want a motion at this time, because you're, as you just said, it's not in or not out.
No, no, I understand.
If, if, if you decide that this is a higher priority than a laminated floor somewhere or whatever it may be-
No, I'm not voting on the, on the air conditioning, I'm just saying that to give support to the document, that the board agrees with the administration. But if you don't, if the JBC doesn't feel that's necessary, then, then this is fine.
I, I mean, I don't think it is. I think, I think if there's another way of, of getting, um, I guess what I would say is the chair could ask if there's any disagreement in, in this document that describes, uh, the need.
Just leave it at that.
And, and then that, that would, that would satisfy it from my perspective.
Stephen.
I think the real goal is just to try to, just to establish a consensus at this stage.
I think the, um, it was also to demonstrate what does go on in the school buildings in the summer.
Right.
In case there's a perception that there's no one in them in the summer.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with that then, so is there anybody who here who has any, who would like to voice any disagreements with anything that's written down here for this document to go to the JBC?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moving on to some of the quick, some quick committee reports.
Great. Um, you know, uh, one of the things that we took a look at on the facilities committee was just, uh, you know, this AC issue in the middle school, and I know there's going to be some ongoing studies, uh, to quantify and track, uh, what the ambient air temperature is, uh, not just in the middle school, but in all of our schools, just so we have an understanding, uh, on a, you know, 365, you know, what the ambient air temperature is, so we can just understand what the, you know, what the, uh, each of the schools and different parts of the schools fall in, what kind of range, uh, from an educational standpoint that we can report out, uh, later on. Um, there were a number of things that, uh, were quite interesting. Steve Bartlett, um, and Kenny Lynch have been working, uh, for some time on a, uh, Energy Star program where we have gone through, uh, and done a number of evaluative processes to actually get, uh, some of our schools, two of them in fact, uh, actually Energy Star rated. Um, there were, uh, a number of schools around, uh, the state, 60 to be exact, that are part of the program. schools around the state, 60 to be exact, that are part of the program. Kenny Lynch is going to be providing us with a summary of each school and how they compare, because one of the things that we, you know, and this kind of bleeds into some of the other things that we were talking about, is just doing a bit of a peer revolt, a peer review to understand how Portsmouth stacks up to some of the other schools that were in the program. So, one of the things that, that kind of leads into, from our standpoint, is is, you know, what are the things that we need to do to get some of the other schools on board? So we've got, ironically, we've got the Lister Academy and the high school are the two buildings that have qualified for this Energy Star rating. One other thing that we reviewed on the committee was the Healthy Schools Initiative, and they have selected a vendor. Spartan Chemicals is going to provide all of the green chemicals that are going to be used. They have the Green Seal products, they're going to provide green cleaning, training to all of the custodial staff. There will be quarterly and annual evaluations of not only the methods, but also of the building and to establish, you know, are they cleaning the buildings properly? We're going to start this at the elementary school levels on August 16th, and we will then slowly move as stock is depleted in the middle and high schools. So to get us started in the elementary schools, we're going to move that stock to the middle and high schools and get that product rolling. We expect the middle and high schools will probably come online starting around January, maybe as late as February, but starting the 2011. So there's some really good things that are happening. But just to point out, we'll probably have, come September, some more information to, to share with the board and the community on the Energy Star program and how we stack, stack up.
Okay. Any questions? Great. Efficiencies.
We met last week, and we were efficient, no.
We were in, we were out.
Well, we started today, we, our first discussion, as you may remember, we generalized, and now we have gotten down to looking at the specifics of our five maintenance individuals, and whether it would be cost-effective and time-effective to start to merge certain things within the program. We, we left with more questions than we went in with to, to try to determine it. And I think what we should start to do is, we don't have the minutes from that meeting, but we did have the, the other minutes, so you will get the actual minutes, because City Manager Bohinko has a, a, a person taking notes the whole time. Without those, I think it's unfair to, it, it's almost a two-hour dialogue of what we are looking at and listening to the city officials. A lot of good ideas are put out on the table, and again, it's the long-term effect of being efficient and not the short-term gains. If we do find, you know, fast gains, I think that's where, where you want to look at. But again, the two major areas were outside maintenance and snow plowing that were discussed. And I, I think there were a number of things that we've asked both our side on the schools and Steve Parkinson and his crew to come back with in our August meeting. So I think, again, more questions from the dialogue came up than, than we started with, and those will probably be answered in our August meeting, which I think is the 17th. No, 27th.
I have it down. Okay. Any questions?
Third Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And last is the joint building committee. So we had our second Public Information Center session last, last Wednesday. I'd say for summer it was well-attended. We, we went through a presentation by our architects and our construction manager on design development and the phasing plan. I think the feedback that we're getting is that the, very positive, both from a design perspective, as well as how we're thinking about phasing. The Portsmouth High School turf field remains on schedule. The Granite Street softball field demo, we expect to begin within the next couple of weeks. We expect that field to be completed by late October, is the, is the current schedule. Two items related to, to the school board. Last time you asked us to think about how we can improve the communication between the JBC actions and this board. And what I've asked Steve Bartlett to do is to distribute to the agenda to everyone here electronically before the JBC meets. And then, after the JBC approves its minutes, to also circulate those minutes to you. What we are, are obviously can never do is to keep you, unless you attend the, the JBC meetings, we can't keep you fully advised of what the Herald may report out the following morning of a meeting. We just don't have that capability. So I guess if you're interested, come to our meetings. And the last thing I'd say is, as it relates to reporting, is that we will begin to report out our financials in summary form, both to this board, as well as I believe Chris will report out to the city council, beginning at our next meeting. Lisa or Leslie, do you have anything to add to that? And I guess the only thing, and I think we reported it last time, is we have a terrific website that's up and running. And maybe, maybe we didn't report that out at our last report.
We did.
But it is live. If you go out to the city council site and click on the Portsmouth Middle School Construction Project, it'll bring you to our site. And Gilbane will add a portion to, to their construction piece soon to that. But that's really where we will point a lot of communications to. And again, our communications team has done a great job in, in creating that.
And that's easily accessible from the city page or the school department page. Let's write out it.
Yeah, our, the next efficiencies meeting is actually the 26th.
26th, okay.
7:30 a.m., Conference Room A.
Dexter.
Public comment session?
I have a, just a quick question in the back of my mind, about the Granite Street field- Yep. -and the expense of all that. Yep. So, has there been any issue, has anyone raised the idea of, can we use, can the city use any of the eminent domain money that comes back to the city to cover any of those, any potential overages on those kinds of projects? Because it is a recreational- Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't specifically talked about that, but that is- File it in your back of your mind? That's an option that the, the JBC would consider, once we see final pricing. And we haven't seen final pricing yet, so we don't know in fact if we're going to be over, and if so, by how much. Right. But it would seem to me that there are several potential pools of money that may be able to cover that overage without affecting the Parrot Ave construction. Exactly. Okay. And, and, and that would be one of, that would be a pool. Okay. So, what's next on the agenda is, we need a motion to actually go into a non-public session in accordance with RSA 91-a33.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add one other thing before we close out the meeting. And this was just a continuation of something that we had spoken about two weeks ago, was, and something that we had touched on with the facilities commission, about just taking a look at, you know, peer, peer schools. And, you know, there's a desire from a number of different aspects, that, from a facility standpoint, from a budgetary, from an educational standpoint. I know through talking with the superintendent, some of that work has already been started, and I'd like to take some of the work that we've already done, to use that as a template, to create this peer model. And I know, you know, talking with some other board members, there's a, some material, some categories that people would like to add. So I know as we develop this, I would ask that the superintendent, you know, share that with us at our next meeting.
At the next meeting?
At our next meeting.
Is that something that- Sure. Okay. Good. Okay, thank you. So, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public, so we can talk about the superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hopefully Conference Room A is open.